Okay, folks, I show 7:00 PM, so let's open the meeting and all rise to pledge the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. Happy New Year, everybody who's here. January fourteenth, we're two weeks into 2019. And it's been, I guess tonight, or last night was our coldest night of the winter so far. We've had a few dustings of snow, but the highway guys haven't really break out the heavy equipment yet, but we spent some money on sand and salt, so we're tapping some of that budget. But every day that we don't have a monster storm is okay, but I hear something's brewing, maybe toward the weekend, but I don't know if we'll call it a monster storm. But welcome. I thought we do is, tonight, we had noticed a public hearing, which we'll head for in a second, but first, I thought maybe we'd accept the minutes from the past two meetings. We had December tenth and December twentieth. I reviewed them and they've been circulated. I would ask for a motion that we accept them, other than if there are any other additions, alterations, or corrections. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. What we'll do in regard to minutes, though, for tonight, we'll advise the clerk. We did hear some sad news for the village and one of its residents passing about, just about ten days ago, I guess, Lee Cookingham, who owned and operated a business just at the north end, and his family in the past had donated, from what I hear, Memorial Park to the village, and it's a nice, open farmland and old stone house that's up there on the north end. He got sick and didn't last too long with the illness, but we heard about it, and it's our custom, when we know of or hear of a village resident who passes away, we leave a blank page in their memory in our minutes. So is there a second on that?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And what we can do is, I think, is a memorial service pending in the spring/May timeframe. We'll see what proves with that, and maybe we could find some other way to memorialize what they helped the village with over the years. But anyway, thank you for that. With regard to the public hearing, it's on the top of your agendas there. We're talking about another leased tenant at our elevated water tower slash cell tower location. We have the opportunity to lease to T-Mobile, and we have in the audience David Groth, but before I get too into it, I would ask that we open a public hearing. Looks like it's 7:04 PM. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right. At our last workshop, we had different documents in front of us, ranging from, we have the lease, we have certain attachments to the lease, and I'll synthesize it a bit, and we can get more specific, too, but essentially, the elevated tank up there is a highly demanded location for rounding out certain cell territory for customers, for the big companies out there. We have Verizon, now T-Mobile wants to come on, and folks might know, we generate approximately $85,000 a year in revenue for cellphone leases up there. It's a nice source of revenue for village residents, aside from the fact that it takes the tax burden down by that amount each year. It also gives village residents and those in the district, in the region or the range of the cell tower, much better cell service and more cell service options than a lot of the folks in different parts of the county and so forth. So in workshop, we're moving toward it, and tonight, what we have to do is, we wanted to have a public hearing, just so everybody would know about it, A, and then B, there's certain steps we have to take with regard to some technical details. The one thing, the clerk did put it out in public notice in both, as required, our regular paper and so forth, so I don't see anybody in particular here from that neighborhood or from the village. We have our regular attendees, and we also have, we brought in on purpose, our cell tower consultant, David Groth, who does business, he represents clients, including us, but they range from Vermont Public Radio to some of the big-name radio franchise, well, franchise is wrong, we're big radio station owners, I think TV stations, too, is, we all know him from the years we've been on the board. He gives us valuable, valuable consulting on issues that arise up there, and in this case, he's been working with T-Mobile for a while to get them a lease that we can work with, and we also have had our legal counsel look at the lease, too. In essence, it boils down to, they're willing to pay, after negotiation, $2,150 a month rent, and they're also aware of the proposals we're putting out there to match up and get all customers, all our tenants on that shared, common generator, so they have agreed, they know about that, and they're willing to contribute toward that, too. For those that don't know, what we're doing is, some new federal rules are mandating that cell operators have backup generator capacity, but we didn't want a bunch of independent generators running up there. We're going to build one, and the various tenants will share in the construction cost, and then they'll share in the operating and maintenance costs. So it's, that's our plan, and we're moving ahead with that plan. But as far as the public hearing itself, a few things I wanted to go into, then we can take comment. It's also for the board. In the minutes of our workshop, we had the text of that resolution we passed then, which identified T-Mobile, and we did a part one, the EAF short form there, and, but we had some wording, and in your packets, I handed out tonight, what land use council has given us. We have two law firms working this on for us. One is land use due to ownership and zoning issues up there, and then, secondly, we have our regular law firm giving us review of contract and in that regard to things. So what we need to do, if we look at the resolution we passed on the twentieth, there was some wording for tonight when we set the public hearing. We had, the Board of Trustees shall hold the public hearing on January fourteenth, 2019, at 7:00 PM here at Village Hall, on whether or not the project should be exempt from the requirements of village zoning law in accordance with the nine-factor Monroe balancing test set forth in the matter of County Monroe versus City of Rochester. What this is about is that the area up there is currently used for two purposes. One is the village elevated water tank, and then, as you all know, we've leased out for many, many, I guess, decades now, it's been twenty years, plus or minus, I think, to different antenna-based companies, some ranging from the old-world paging companies to now the modern cell companies. And it is owned up there, R-10, so the municipal use up there with the water tower and the attached cell towers is not consistent necessarily with an R-10, so we have to go through what's called a balancing test to see if, you know, we'll get our opinion here, and we'll be able to vote on whether or not it works within that confine. So far, everything I've seen is that it does, and in your packet, I handed out balancing test factors, and then, within a resolution toward the bottom of your packet, I think our, it looks like if we look at page two, you'll see how the test items are discussed by council, giving advice to us on this matter. I think, just for the record, I just want to go through them, but the one, the first test, the nature and scope of the instrumentality seeking immunity. So council says, "The village is a municipal corporation incorporated under the laws of the New York State." So that's our nature and scope. Number two, the encroaching government's legislative grant of authority, and then, "The village has the sole authority to adopt and amend zoning laws within its boundaries and to enter into leases with telecommunications providers for the use of the water tower." Next one, the kind of function or land use involved. "The village is proposing to authorize the co-location of telecommunications antennae on an existing tall structure, the village water tower. The antennae would provide cellular service, including emergency 911 services, to persons within the service area." Number four, "The effect local land use regulation would have upon the enterprise concerned. Telecommunications tower and antenna is not permitted use in the R-10, and would therefore be prohibited." Number five, "Alternative locations, facility, and less restrictive zoning areas. A telecommunications tower and antenna is not permitted in any of the village's zoning districts, and therefore no other alternative locations within the village." Number six, "The impact upon legitimate local interests. The village has an interest in providing cellular services to its residents and in maintaining the aesthetics of the village. Co-location on an existing tall structure within the village avoids the need for erection of a separate monopole, which can be unsightly." Number seven, "Alternative methods of providing a proposed improvement. A new monopole could be constructed outside the village, but the service area within the village would be impacted. Alternatively, the village or the provider could seek a use variance from the ZBA," and then council cites the case Cellular Telephone Company v. Rosenberg, eighty-second, eighty-two, New York, second. "The state's highest court established, quote, 'a public necessity test for public utilities in lieu of the traditional test for a use variance, but this would still require applying for a variance, paying an application fee, and a review process.'" Number eight, "The extent of the public interest to be served by the improvements. Our position is public safety will be enhanced by the provision of more reliable cellular service. The village will also benefit monetarily from the lease with T-Mobile Northeast LLC." And the last test item is intergovernmental participation in the project development process and an opportunity to be heard, and that's why we're here tonight. The village board has held, which we are holding right now, a public hearing, allowing members of the public and other municipal boards the opportunity to be heard. So those are tests, and as you can see, the one item is that where it's contrary to our R-10 zoning, there is no other option, and we already are doing this there for multiple years, and it is our land, and I know we've discussed in the past, monopoles somewhere else, but as council says, technically, they're not allowed anywhere else, and then on top of that, they're multi-multi-expensive, maybe Groth could give us an idea on that if we ask him, but, and the other part, the engineering and the specs we've been shown indicate, we're not going high into the existing profile of the tank, this array is going up on the legs of the tank, and maybe we could, in some words, from a distance, it's not changing the line of the current tank when you look at what's already up there. Nothing new's going to be up above, it's down on the legs. Is that correct, Mr. Groth?
Yes, it will be mounted underneath the tank.
Yeah. And the other part, our understanding is that it will not require what I'll call the old-fashioned blockhouse with cooling equipment and everything, it's going to be exterior equipment, and maybe, David, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Basically, they're proposing a galvanized steel platform on top of concrete piers, and the light gray boxes would be installed on top of those, and above it would be another, similar to that platform that would prevent, oh, you want me to use?
I think, probably, I forgot to give you that.
It's on.
Okay. So there would be a concrete piers, then there would be the galvanized steel platform upon which their equipment would be installed, and above it would be another galvanized steel platform, which prevents falling ice from injuring the equipment when ice falls from the tower. So that's, that's the basic concept, and then there would be another item we call an ice bridge, where the cables lead to the tower from this northeast corner of the, of the area there, and that protects, again, the cables from ice, chunks of ice falling off the water tank, you know, should there be an ice storm or something like that. So that's, it's fairly standard, it's what you see at most cell sites. The difference is, instead of a monopole or a tower, we're using the existing water tank, so that's basically what we're talking about. Other than that, it's a pretty standard cellular type of installation.
And this placement wouldn't affect that common generator slab we're talking about? Is that correct?
The common generator slab would be located to the south toward the, when I spoke with Catherine, CT Mail would be inside the fence, but on the south side, which is the roadside, and the idea of that would be to make it easy to fill and maintain and have it near the road. All the other cell equipment would be further up in the compound.
I'm not sure that mic's working. You picking that up, cameraman? You are? Okay.
Okay, great. I can always speak louder, too.
I can hear you, but I'm sure she, we just wanted for a CD.
Are there any other questions that?
Well, what I thought we do is, we are in a public hearing, I kind of want to explain, it's technical and detailed, so we've hit the basis of the public hearing. We would open it to comment from the board and folks in the audience. Maybe, David, if you would mind handling, if they have a question they could ask.
Sure.
Do you have two mics?
Yeah, right.
With this contract, are you, with that amount, $21.50, are you locked into that for how long?
It's a five-year cycle, and then with renewals available up to, I think it's four, total of four. He's looking right now, and.
There is an escalator every year, so.
Two percent is the escalator.
Yeah, each year is 102% of the year prior for every year that they exist at the site. So it goes up two percent a year through every cycle, including renewal cycles, if this is the rise.
Okay. Okay, looks like, anybody else on the board? We have more to do on it, where more questions can come up, but it's, I lost my screen here. All right, the next step, I would recommend that we close the public hearing, having heard the details and some comment from the public. Looks like it's 7:15, 7:18, technically. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
What I'd like to do next is break our agenda a bit, since we have the consultant here, and if we could get him in and out, and if any questions come up as we move through the rest, you know, instead of making him sit here through regular business. What I'm looking at is, we have to review, it's also in your packets, form part two there. Like we said, we did part one, and, I don't know, let's see, let me find mine while grids and so forth. Again, land use council has helped us interpret this and fill it out. I don't know, Brent, if you've had a chance to look at it, but what she's indicating, it looks like it could be considered essentially an egg deck, you know, it's, there's, if you go down the boxes, will a proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use plan? Will a proposed action result in changes in the use or intensity of the land? And what we're saying here is that we already use this area for cell tower, for cell use, so we're not really changing anything. Will a proposed action impair the character quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Again, thinking about that, it's number eight there. The tower's been there forever, and we intend to keep the tower there, and this design and this attachment points are going to be where, to the distant viewer, it's not, not on the horizon as you're driving into Red Hook from anywhere, so we're not changing that configuration in the sightlines. And then, some of them have to do with, will proposed action result in increased potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage? Everything's attached up on the legs, and that, the base is up on, you said, concrete pilings?
Well, basically, we're at the top of the property, too, so if water runs down, I don't see any erosion as a result of this.
Mm-hmm. And, anyway, the board can look over the, to part two there. I'm just looking at my notes. Is there any comment on part two? The boxes checked and so forth?
And the generator, and that, is that going to be a whisper?
Oh.
A quiet generator.
It will be a quiet generator. We're looking at what we call level-two sound attenuation with the enclosure. It'll be a diesel generator with a tank underneath, a double-wall tank, and the radiator exhaust and the engine exhaust will be baffled, and the inside of the unit is insulated. So we, that, having one generator and having it be designed to be quiet was the intention.
Yeah, if you're on the south side of the property, which next, is next to the road.
Exactly. So we plan to make it very quiet. That's in the specification.
Yeah, right now, like David mentioned earlier, we have our engineers specing out so we can take some bids on that, because, but anyway, all right, so what I would ask, if we've all reviewed part two, I would move toward putting motion on the floor that we review part two and move that we adopt the negative declaration on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, what we want to do next, I see the stages, essentially, we're moving through the land use phase, and in your packet there is, I'll find it myself, resolution, we'll have to have Cindy give us a number. This has to do with, it has the word co-location, which we were trying to decide in the workshop meeting, is that truly a word? But I think we decided it is, but does, Cindy, do you have your resolution book handy, or?
I thought you already gave this one five.
No, this is, this is different. This is the co-location piece of it, so it'd be six then, huh?
Yeah.
Jay, welcome.
Thank you.
This is resolution number six. We usually, yeah, I do. Yeah, it's, I gave it, it was in this, let's see, that packet that was, yes, in the bottom of that. Jay, I don't know, you're usually our malephile-voiced resolution reader. Do you see one that says, "Top, Village of Red Hook," and "Resolution authorized in the co-location"?
Oh, okay. Brent provided that for me.
Jay, just to get you up to speed, what we did, we had the public hearing, open and closed, and we passed an egg deck on the co-location process to put T-Mobile up there, and what we have is some land use resolution here, we're calling number six, and then we have to consider the contract and the review done by council on that as resolution five, but we want to do number six here, because it just came in.
Shall I start at the wheres?
Yes, please.
Whereas the T-Mobile Northeast LLC has requested that the village enter into a lease agreement to co-locate antenna and related facilities on an existing municipality-owned water tower, parenthetic the project, located at 21 Tower Street, Red Hook, New York, 12571, parenthetic the property, and whereas a short environmental assessment form, parenthetic EAF, dated December 20, 2018, has been prepared pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and whereas on December 20, 2018, the village board of trustees classified the action as an unlisted action and determined to conduct an uncoordinated review. And whereas the property is located within the R-10,000 zoning district, and whereas a telecommunications antenna is not listed as a permitted use in the R-10,000 zoning district, and whereas cellular phone towers have been declared by the Court of Appeals to be a public utility facility, and municipalities must provide a reasonable opportunity for cell, cellular companies to exist and serve the market. And whereas in determining whether a municipal action is exempt from zoning regulations, the village must consider the balancing of public interests approach set forth in the matter of County of Monroe versus the City of Rochester, 72 NY2D 338, parenthetic 1988, including the nature and scope of the instrumentality seeking immunity, the encroaching government's legislative grant of authority, the kind of function or land use involved, the effect local land use regulation would have upon the enterprise concerned, alternative locations for the facility in less restrictive zoning areas, the impact upon legitimate local interests, alternative methods of providing the proposed improvement, the extent of the public interest to be served by the improvements, and intergovernmental participation in the project development process, and an opportunity to be heard, parenthetic the Monroe balancing test. And whereas in accordance with the case of Crown Communications, New York Incorporated versus the Department of Transportation of the State of New York, 4 NY3D 159, parenthetic 2005, governmental immunity from zoning may be extended to private partners through contractual agreements for the installation of telecommunications equipment on municipal land. And whereas a duly-noticed public hearing was held on January 14, 2019, during which the village board accepted comments on whether and to what extent the village's zoning law should apply to the project, taking into account the nine factors set forth in the matter of the City of Monroe versus the City of Rochester. Now, therefore be it resolved that the village board of trustees hereby makes the following findings pursuant to the matter of City of Monroe versus the City of Rochester. Number one, the nature and scope of the instrumentality seeking immunity. The village is a municipal corporation incorporated under the laws of the State of New York. Number two, the encroaching government's legislative grant of authority. The village has the sole authority to adopt and amend zoning laws within its boundaries and to enter into leases with telecommunications providers for use of the water tower. Number three, the kind of function or land use involved. The village is proposing to authorize the co-location of telecommunications antenna on an existing tall structure, the village water tower. The antenna would provide cellular service, including emergency 911 services to persons within the service area. Number four, the effect local land use regulation would have on the enterprise concerned. A telecommunications tower and antenna is not a permitted use in the R-10,000 district and therefore would be prohibited. Number five, alternative locations for the facility in less restrictive zoning areas. A telecommunications tower and antenna is not permitted in any of the village's zoning districts, and therefore no other alternative locations within the village. Number six, the impact upon legitimate local interests. The village has an interest in providing cellular services to its residents and in maintaining the aesthetics of the village. Co-location on an existing tall structure within the village avoids the need for erection of a separate monopole, which can be unsightly. Number seven, alternative methods of providing the proposed improvement. A new monopole could be constructed outside of the village, but the service area within the village would be impacted. Alternatively, the village or the provider could seek a use variance from the zoning board of appeals. In Cellular Telephone Company versus Rosenberg, 82 NY2D 364, parenthetic 1993, the state's highest court established public necessity test for public utilities in lieu of traditional test for a use variance, but this would still require applying for a variance, paying an application fee, and review process. Number eight, the extent of the public interest to be served by the improvements. The public safety would be enhanced by the provision of more reliable cellular service. The village will also benefit monetarily from the lease with T-Mobile Northeast LLC. Number nine, intergovernmental participation in the project development process and an opportunity to be heard. The village board has held a public hearing, allowing members of the public and other municipal boards the opportunity to be heard. Be it further resolved that, based on the foregoing, the village board determines that the benefit to the public in authorizing the co-location of antenna on an existing tall structure, the water tower, outweighs the benefit to the village of compliance with the zoning law, and that is in the public interest to exempt the village from the application of the zoning law to the project.
Thank you, sir. So Jay read the text. I had two thoughts. I would offer it up in the form of motion that we. in the form of motion that we adopt the resolution, but I think what I'd like to do is, I would like to number this number five and change what was pre-numbered five, just so they flow within the scope of our meeting tonight. So, I would call this one number five. And when we get to the next one, we'll renumber that six. It's been read and it was in line with what I read and what we discussed in the public hearing that we did talk about the test points of the Monroe process. I'd offer it as a motion asking for a second so we could have some more discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion wise, we have our consultant here. We've had some comment from audience. So, discussion be from the board. As the text reads, it does seem we're already using that area for cell tower. I think we owe our residents the best cell tower or cell phone company options we can give them. And on top of that, we make some money and offset taxation pressures. It looks, I know from talking to our consultant that the tenant wants to get active, get built right away. So, we're talking rent would probably commence fairly quickly. Because my opinion is, once they're on our land and even though the button is not pushed to send out signal, they would be owing us rent. And that's why I read the lease. And would that be consultant's opinion too?
Yes, they are considering this a priority site, this one and a few others in the area. So, they have a very aggressive schedule to try to get it accomplished.
So, we enter budget mode shortly for our fiscal years that is coming up. But, um, this one will start to see some revenue stream pretty quickly. And as always, they don't work independently. Our retained consultant manages, monitors, keeps them within parameters of proper workmanship and expertise. So, he's, you know, we're not sitting here letting them dictate what's going up and what's, how much noise they make or how much, you know, what time of day they start work. There are different things that we try to keep it as under control as we can up there. So, you'd be still doing that, correct?
That is correct, absolutely.
All right. So, we have resolution five in front of us. We've had some discussion. Any other discussion? I'd call it to a vote. Um, I would vote yes. We'll go down. Brent Kowachuk?
Yes.
Charlie Lang?
Yes.
Jennifer Norris?
Yes.
Jay Trapp?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Resolution five is adopted. Then the last part of this is, um, has to do with the contractual side of things. What I would need a minute to do is to find my folder with that part in it. This one, we're saying we will call number six. You're showing it as five in your packets. It's a one pager. What it does, it takes some of the items we talked about in the public hearing and the secret review and brings it into a context, but also confirms that council and consultant have looked at the terms of the lease and find them consistent with village law and also a market rate from the consultant that we're sure it is the competitive best price we can get for the rent. And, uh, Mr. Jay, this is only one pager. You still have some voice left over?
I'm ready here. This is, uh, this is the one, right. Whereas T-Mobile Northeast LLC has submitted an application to the village board of trustees for construction of an additional cell tower facility on the Village of Red Hook water tank. And whereas the village board of trustees has declared itself lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, parenthetic, SECRE, as sole approving board for this application. And whereas the board of trustees referred the application to its cell tower consultant, David Groth, who has reviewed the application to determine whether the installation would have any adverse impacts on the village water tank, and in consultation with the village attorney has reviewed the contract proposal for form and content. And whereas the consultant has advised this board that the installation can be accomplished safely with no harmful effects to the village property and residents. And whereas the village board of trustees has conducted a public hearing to receive input from any residents regarding the new installation. Now, therefore be it resolved that the following, a review of the application, input from its consultant, comments received at the public hearing, and a review of the short environmental assessment form, the village board of trustees hereby determines that the proposed contract and installation will have no significant adverse environmental impacts and therefore adopts a negative declaration under the SECRE and further authorizes the mayor to execute the contract in the form annexed hereto. Dated Red Hook, New York, January 14, 2019.
So, as far as it's offered, I would put that in the form of a motion that we adopt resolution six. Ask for a second so we could have some more discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, like we said, it boils down to a site lease agreement with attachments of technical data and so forth. It really is within what I would consider parameters of the consultant on the technical. And even some of the legalese, David Groth is not a lawyer, but he works with dozens and dozens of these. So, he's been very helpful even to our council on establishing the lease. It tends to model itself after the other leases we have up there. But, um, the big thing to me is, you know, from the pricing standpoint that we're assured it's competitive. And like we said earlier tonight, there are some increases based on renewal points.
So, Ed, on this, um, just for clarification purposes, did you want to say Village of Red Hook Elevated Water Tank or Tower, Tower Street Water Tank? Because we do have two other ones.
Good point. What paragraph are you in there?
The first one?
On the cell tower, let's see, additional cell tower facility on the Village of, okay. I think the land use one cited a street address of 21 Tower Street, I think it said.
Then it appears down on, um...
Sorry, were you saying something that I was reading?
Yeah, there was another one. On the, the second whereas, the third line. I'm sorry, the third whereas.
Okay, I'm listening.
So, any adverse impacts on the village water tank, you know, same?
So, same thing, whatever we define the first one as, we would repeat that definition. So, we're authorizing construction of additional cell tower facility on the Village of Red Hook. I guess we could say elevated water tank, existing elevated water tank off Tower Street. Would that be?
Yeah.
So, we could put the word existing. Elevated. Water tank off Tower Street. And then repeat that wherever the word water tank appears. I think that's a good suggestion. So, we would modify resolution six to include those insertions. So, we have a motion, a second. We're in discussion. Any other thoughts or input? Hearing none. Um, this one just calls for a vote. Looks like, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay. I think we've got that. So, um, congratulations. We have a new revenue stream and customers are going to have a little more cell company options in the village and people passing through and so forth. I think Wednesday is my understanding. T-Mobile will advise them tomorrow that we move through it and, um...
I will let you and the attorney know, um, tomorrow, what time on Wednesday. We'll work out something on Wednesday. Because we have another town as well that is up for signature. So, Town of Myland. So, we're trying to get them both done on, the signatures on Wednesday if possible.
Okay. I'll keep our packet together.
Okay, very good. And then, all the documents, when the gentleman arrives on Wednesday, all of it, he'll have all of the signatory documents, including memorandum of lease and so forth. So, there should be everything together in a signing package. And then, we would need the signature notarized.
Yes. We have two notaries here in the building, so.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you, David.
If there's nothing else, if there is, I can wait.
No, let's see. What can we make you work on? Let's see. No. I don't know. What else do we talk about when you come visit? Let's see. Oh, yeah. It's one thing, while we have him here, Brent and myself met with the library director and the community center director, working on a concept called white spaces. And we're using David. I think he's giving us a little bit of free time on that, is my gut feeling.
I am.
We, uh, it's essentially a methodology to find and create hotspots in and around the village. We're thinking it could be helpful on a few levels, folks that can't afford their own direct subscriptions to cable internet providers or telephone internet providers. And then, it also gives certain mobile hotspot concepts. It took a little bit of reading for me to get up to speed what it really is, but you use a vacant space between existing TV and radio signals to communicate spaces that can run up to, what, six miles in distance from an antenna? And, uh, but it still does require somebody having an account where you actually get into the pipeline of the internet. So, it's, um, and you have to have enough bandwidth to spread it out. So, we're working on that. But we're looking at a couple ideas with maybe some grant money, the local Asienzo Fund. Seemed like it might be a good one to tap because it gives access to folks of limited means to getting into the internet. And it also, it's right now being promoted pretty hard by the libraries. And it looks like to me that it's also a smart way when you get more rural, where folks just can't get broadband, which limits the economy, limits their education abilities. But I don't, Brent, did you have some thoughts? Brent was, he's a, he doesn't have a cellphone, but he was reading a lot about white spaces.
This is a good opportunity for, we originally were looking at providing hotspots in the village. Initially started with areas around the library and the benches that the village put out so people could sit and get on and on their computers or mobile devices and stay informed and in tune. But the more we read, the bigger spread, uh, we can do it. So, we're looking at some providers right now, including those that have fiber optic, um, technology, more reliable signals and where it could be utilized probably more efficiently and more reliably. And, um, so it sounded like a good project. And there's been, as Ed had said, some of the libraries nationwide have been looking at this project and it just seemed like something we wanted to pursue. And so, David was gracious enough to lend his consulting expertise to our group and discussion. And we're moving forward, exploring the options and hope this could come to fruition and it'd be a really good project for the Village of Red Hook. So, thank you very much for your...
You're welcome. And I'm available to continue with that, so.
Thanks.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, it was pretty impressive. He was on a conference call from Vermont. And I made, when we're circulating to do the conference and up in our room upstairs, I said, "We're going to bring in our radio slash engineer guy" or something. And all the people that came, they're really impressed that we got a radio engineer guy. And I said, "Well, we have people for everything." But, uh, but he really was truly helpful on the conference call because it's pretty technical. But thanks, David. All right. Now, to some more mundane parts of our meeting. We'll move to regular department and committee reports. We have from Treasurer Shirella, the treasurer's report. I'll take a peek at it myself here quickly. I do remember where we used to have a million dollars in the account around, what was that, June 1st? But anyway, now the general fund is indicating a balance of $423,292. Water fund, $198,883. Trust and agency, $34,757. Materials management, $1,452.18. Petty cash, $44.50. Village green, $4,454. Harts gravel, $5,492. Health insurance, $4,862. Sewer fund, $20,000. As far as expenses, general fund, the month's expenses were $134,989. Water fund, $17,478. Trust and agency, $34,323. Materials management, $3,021.
Okay, there's some correction?
Okay.
The sewer fund has $17,680.
Okay, good. When I read it, I was going to say...
That's how much we put in it. I did pay a bill out of there.
Yeah, so $17,008, what?
$680.
$680. Yeah, we did, um, just so the board knows, we're still filing the easements. And there's a filing fee between the title agency and the county. So, it was $2,200 and change, as I recall. So, and they want it immediately. We can't, what we're going to do is, we will get reimbursed by EFC, but they needed it to take the filings. And so, we pulled it out of sewer. Now, we'll reimburse sewer when the EFC funding comes in. One thing I know, I've signed the vouchers. It says here, monthly expenses in general were $134,000. Trying to think, was there one big, any one big one? No, okay. Um, yeah. I don't remember one, but it seemed like a little bit of a hefty number there. But, um, water fund didn't spend too much. We can talk about water when Charlie comes up as far as a couple of things we're working on there. But, um, that being said, I would ask for a motion to accept the report from the treasurer. There's a favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. Looks like I go next again here. Police report for December. We had, um, total of 344 incidents. Breakdown is 222 in the Village of Red Hook, 116 in the Town of Red Hook. Village of Tivoli has six. Traffic tickets, 114. Breakout is 78 in the village, 36 in the town. Arrests were 20. 12 were in the village, eight were in the town. While I'm talking on this, we've been out on the streets, talking to some folks. And it still seems like our biggest two things we hear of are not heavy criminal type things, but, um, one is traffic and apparent speed of traffic on the side streets. And then, um, parking slash over length staying and parking on the business sector streets. And, um, we walked with the sergeant to a few locations on the residential complaints. And we are, the Town of Red Hook and the village are jointly purchasing a speed trailer. And we understand that it's somewhere between here and Pennsylvania. We're, uh, it's somewhere en route. And it has that chip capability where it counts traffic. You might have remembered other meetings when we had borrowed it from other folks. It counts cars and log speed. And then, uh, it doesn't issue tickets or anything, but it can help us support data and see what we have to do as far as enforcement. The downside is most of our small village streets, there's no place for radar trap to exist. It's, um, so we're looking at some options. And on the parking, no parking. We've been trying, leaning on the police to get a few, what we think are some repeat offenders cited so they get the message. But, um, and Jay, I did talk to the sergeant about a question you raised last week. And, uh, if we look at Tivoli again this week, let's see, it's usually the last page of that report. They do break down why they were there. And, um, excuse me. From what I'm told, a lot of it has to do with the polling and availability when they're on town patrol of other, meaning sheriff or state police patrols. And then, um, but we do not specifically patrol Tivoli. We don't, um, give them any services. So, if you look at them, Jay, one ranges from a suicide attempt, you know. So, it looks like people are calling in and polls are going out and then our guys are responding. But like you... but like everywhere, there were six of them. So, we could talk about that, Jay, if you want. On the fire company side of things, a couple things.
Just real quickly, too, on the traffic issue, I was talking to some folks out of Red Hook Commons and Red Hook Estates, and I also observed how our new stop signs worked. And I saw cars just looked like they didn't even see the stop signs there. And then, I did hear one comment from a resident that there were people speeding on Cambridge right at that intersection of, as it goes in the Kent, splits out to Amherst there. And he requested a stop sign right at the intersection of Kent and Cambridge. So, I'll pass that along to you.
Yeah, maybe do a sketch, because we put some on the other end of Kent, this time, right?
There's two on, yeah, Amherst and Kent kinda come together in the Kent, then go into Cambridge. So, those two are not being observed, and people still take Cambridge, which goes all the way around uninterrupted, so I'll draw you a map.
Okay, yeah, 'cause, thanks.
They cited some speeds, which they questioned twice, and it was very excessive, but.
On the fire company side of things, we did mention other meetings that this year coming up is the one-hundredth anniversary of the Red Hook Fire Company being formed, and then it also is the one-hundredth anniversary of Tivoli Fire Company being formed. And there was some going back and forth, let's hold one big celebration that incorporates everybody, and now it has moved back to that, so I think that's a good piece of information to know. Mayor Griffiths from Tivoli called, and their people are agreeing to work with the Red Hook people and do one big celebration here. I've been invited to a meeting Wednesday this week to plan the festivities with them. It's, so I guess we're known as good celebrations planners, so maybe I'll bring Jan or Jay, I don't know, but we'll see what they have in mind, but it sounds like it'll be the week before the fair, and that August timeframe is what I've heard, so I'll have more information after I go Wednesday.
Seventeen.
Yeah, hearing that, and so it'll be a nice summer event, and far enough away from Hardscrabble, so we're not head-to-head competing. But as far as the report that they've issued or given us, it looks like a total of ninety, if I can do my math right, yeah, it looks like ninety calls, and that seems about the number we've seen historically. It broke out from their analysis, thirty-four fire calls and fifty-six EMS calls. What I usually do is take this and then enter into a spreadsheet, what are town calls versus village calls? I haven't got that part done yet, but that'll be a spreadsheet we can look at when we get into budget world and so forth. So, that's good. What we could do, let's see, Trustee Trapper, you want to talk about planning and zoning?
Sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, for the previous month, there were four building permits issued within the village, there were two certificates of occupancy issued, one certificate of compliance issued, and five municipal searches were conducted. No orders to remedy, no stop-work orders, no court appearances, and fire inspections have an attached report. It's, be happy to share that. I don't see any complaints listed, and inspections is an attached report as well. The planning board, December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, had two items of business, a site plan approval granted at seventy-five sixty-two North Broadway, and number two, a sign application for the property located at three St. John Street, listed under, and it gives the tax ID number. The zoning board had no items of business, and there was no agenda, no meeting due. The money tendered for the month of December was $1,516. And I wanted to comment on, I saw an email going back and forth about the annual report submitted by the building department. While we typically get it in, in most municipalities, it's not like a critical, it has to be done at any particular timeframe, and the likelihood that the state website will actually show it as being submitted is questionable. I mean, there are towns that have submitted them every year, and it does not necessarily show them as being submitted, but the report substance is basically how many building permits were issued, what types of building, how many commercial, how many residential, single-family, multifamily, you know, things like that. That's, it's just an accounting of the amount of work. It doesn't, I don't believe that any monetary values are placed on it, just a numerical number of building permits issued.
So, Lara and the people that work up there could pull it together from existing data, it sounds like.
Yeah, it's typically, I mean, in the municipalities where I've worked, the admin staff usually goes through the records and pulls those together, and then I would review them and just, it's, it's an e-report. You fill it out online, and then it just goes, goes in. You can print yourself a copy for your files, but it goes in.
I think Cindy started the request, and I forwarded it to you and Lara and, I think, our consulting building inspectors, so.
Right, and the Planning Federation is gonna have their first meeting to start the process of trying to start to select the spring classes, so we'll do our, we typically do our, you know, introduction to, to planning and introduction to zoning, because there are always a great number of newbies, you know, appointed first of the year, so we try and hit those guys. And, you know, I can say that, I know everybody says, "Well, I've seen it all, I know everything that's going on," but you always learn something, so show up, you know, it's good for you. Plus, we feed you, and the village pays, and so, show up, get your credits, get your lunch, your dinner, rather, and learn a few things, so.
Good.
We haven't set our meeting, but it's gonna be toward the end of January.
Thank you, Jay.
Should pretty much do it.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, looks like we could take our pick. Trustee Norris, why don't you go next?
Sure. All right, I'm gonna start with events, because garbage is a fiasco. Historic Red Hook will hold their annual soup night on Saturday, January twenty-sixth, from six to eight. And Jay, your band is playing that night, is that correct?
That would be, well, Jack and I are playing the duality side of ourselves.
Fantastic.
What day was that? I'm sorry.
That's Saturday, January twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Six to, six to eight.
Six to eight. And chili night is sometime in February, I couldn't find the exact date, their website hadn't been updated, but those are some nice winter events to get you out of the house. You have the poster for the electronic waste, if you wouldn't mind holding it up. We have our annual electronic waste recycling event this Saturday at the town recycling center from eight to one. With, we do this in conjunction with the town and the Bard Center for Civic Engagement, they provide a lot of the volunteers, which we really couldn't do it without the muscle power. allowable e-waste will be televisions, there will be a fee for the larger ones, monitors, again, a fee for the larger ones, computers, a fee for the larger ones, keyboards, small-scale servers, fax machines, scanners, printers, cellphones, VCR, DVR, DVD players, portable digital music players, digital computer, boxes, cable or satellite receivers, electronic or video game consoles. If you have a large item, are we doing pickup?
I think we'll forego that.
Okay.
What she was going to read is, we often offer to pick up, and it's on our posters, but we haven't had any callers, right, yet for large item pickup?
Just one, the guy was a Dan.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Large air conditioner.
'Cause I'll interject, and there's snow predicted, so Dan said he's probably gonna have his trucks rigged for plowing, and I'm not sure. I can pull a water tank behind the truck, but I'm not sure I wanna be driving around a big plow in front of me, because I usually drive the truck to pick up the heavy equipment. So, we'll see what that is, but, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, no, I'm done with that.
Okay.
All right, so materials management, probably everybody has been grumbling this month, because we had to go back to separated garbage. Due to global issues, our recycling is all goofy, so we're back to where we were several years ago with the schedule, unfortunately. Commingled is every other week, alternating with cardboard and paper. A schedule did go out in the newsletter. Also, as a result of all of this, our tag rates had to be raised, so it's now three dollars for blue tags and six dollars for red tags. For the month of December, we had ten point seven-two tons of garbage and five point one ton, ton, bleh, five point one tons of single-stream recycling. We paid out one thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents and had four thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents in tag sales, which sounds high, but please note that the tag sale amount is high, in part to early reporting from last month, which was particularly low, and some people were stockpiling, myself included, in response to the rise in tag sales.
Tag sales or prices?
Tag prices, sorry. So, that's, that's that. It's a bummer. I don't know what else to say.
And maybe we should talk about it a little more, because we did see a flurry, not that I'm a Facebooker, but we heard folks were concerned. I think a couple things we have to point out, we still feel we out-compete price-wise. For instance, my household, I can do for twelve dollars a month what the private guy would charge me forty dollars a month for. Granted, I'm a household of two now, I don't have little kids running around and different things making a lot more waste, but we do think we've got a great program, we wanna keep it. I was doing some math, the highway folks say we have the same, we're down to our core customers, it's about two hundred twenty-five households, and if you do, from our water meter count, that's about thirty, thirty percent of our households using us, which is still a good number. We'll revisit things in budget season again, how we do it, but it's still that pay-as-you-throw program is what we do, and it does minimize pure household garbage, but I mean, it makes people think more about splitting and doing the recycling, even though we admit it's gone backwards, but it's beyond our control. Folks, when Jen mentioned stockpiling, now we pick up commingle twice a month, and then paper once a month, and cardboard once a month. But the good news is, it brings us down, that shouldn't cost us any money except for the household waste piece, so we're gonna knock, you know, we were getting charged seventy-seven bucks a ton for single-stream at the end there, and we're usually about five or six tons of that per month, and it's still a great, great system, and it keeps, keeps our highway budget off in its own budget line for that day, meaning we don't have to pay them in one day a week, because we pay them through the garbage program. On the electronic waste, I think it's gonna go on, we were talking about changing it with the weather forecast, but from what I've seen lately, it's, I think the snow's gonna start later Saturday, I think they're talking five to eight inches, but it's, you know, like what Jen was saying, the Bard folks, logistics, the way it works, we sell it all to a certified, credentialed recycling acceptor. What that means is, they take the precious heavy metals out, they recycle that properly, reuse it properly, and then they just don't dump things in some other landfill besides one we know. They recycle the plastic components, so they're all lined up with their equipment here, so it's hard to bounce it another day, so, so, right now, we're keeping it on.
I actually also forgot to mention, there's a repair cafe, which will be held at the community center on Monday, Martin Luther King Day, from eleven to, oh, sorry, eleven-thirty to two-thirty at the community center, you can bring in, I'm going to be fixing jewelry for people, I know people will have sewing machines to fix things, some, a knife sharpener's gonna be there, so rather than throw out your broken things, you can bring it to the repair cafe, and for free, someone will hopefully fix it for you, so.
Good, I'm glad you reminded us of that.
That's another cool thing that's going on.
And to flip to the spreadsheet side of Jen's paperwork there, like she said, the tag sales bounced back up in December to make up for that low in November, and if you look at her average on the far right, it's thirty-six hundred eighty-one dollars, and I was doing some math today, that budget's out to about forty-four, call forty-five thousand dollars, and that'd be annualized twelve months. So, it's not that bad, it's just, it seems that other month scared us when it was so low, but it's still something we'll look at when we move into budget season. But we do wanna promote our system, and we sell, like we always say, at the health food store, Max Agway, and then here, of course, and we could, one option might be to sell also a taste bud, or somewhere else that people frequent. I never thought of it before, but maybe the library'd be even interested, but we'll help them with White Spaces, they can sell tags. Jen, thank you. Mr. Lang, are you ready to talk water?
Let's, let's talk water. So, during the month of December, the water treatment facility treated six million four-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand total gallons, which averages out at two hundred and seven thousand six hundred gallons a day. So, that's right about the average usage with the improved infrastructure, I mean, it seems to follow around two hundred thousand. There were three bacteriological samples sent out for testing, and all three came back clear of coliform and E. coli bacteria, so that's always good. And the water treatment plant used forty-five gallons of sodium hypochlorite to treat the water, and that's an average daily use of one point four-five gallons per day, which I think is relatively low. Outstanding issues, we're still dealing with the elevated storage tank and.
Yeah, Brent and I could go on that, but, yeah, it's a lot of words there, but.
Right.
We could, when you're done reading the bold part, we could talk specifics afterwards.
Okay. There are still some issues with this SCADA system, which we're monitoring and addressing, hopefully.
Yes.
And then, follow-up from that Department of Health inspection, as far as mostly, I think, security issues. And then, there's a few, you know, there's always a handful of meters that aren't, don't seem to be reporting correctly, or some issues, otherwise.
Yeah, good. Later on the agenda, I've handwritten, I had a meeting today with Fernando Dongo from, he's our rep at VRI, rather, and when we get to regular business, we can talk about that, too, but on the bigger page, I guess it's page two there, what Charlie was looking at, we're putting heavy lean on CT Mail to get that elevated tank decommissioned. One of the findings of the Department of Health was, part of phase two, was to have that decommissioned, and it's still not decommissioned. CT Mail's paying for all the engineering and those sorts of costs to do it, we've had to pick up one SCADA piece to, to make it happen, so it can run off the pumps at the wellhead area. That's what that SCADA and elevated tank part is about. And then, what we did, we got a DOH inspection, they were primarily concerned about the fact that the elevated tank's not decommissioned yet, and like Charlie said, they wanted a little more security. We do have high-intensity security and patrol around the tank and the production facilities, but there's some remote wells that they felt we should do a little more for, so I don't know if we have to get the police to take the Tahoe out there when, you know, rain, snow, sleet, whatever, take a look at what's going on. I don't know if it's, are people just failing to lock something up when they're done, or if it's somebody breaking a hasp or what, but a couple things we have to work on. But, like I said, he came in around two today and spent an hour or two here with me to work on some of that. Part of it, I guess I'll let some of the info out, in the regular business, I have water operations moved to VRI, what I'm looking at there is, we've been working trying to certain things as much as we can internally, and one of the findings of the DOH inspection was, we need to have what they call a Class C operator assistant slash backup position. Fernando covers us with the main Class C, our staff and employees headed for a Class D, but just hasn't gotten there yet, and I think we'll talk about that and come back out after that, but I have some thoughts on what we should do. But, anyway, as far as what I was doing on the number side of the world, like we do with garbage, this last quarter, we built about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in revenue, which annualizes to, what, five, can't do the math, almost five sixty or so, five? And then, it looks like we're losing about twenty percent, if you look, we can show, when Charlie does the gallons pumped per day, and then we can look in the billing at what's sold in the quarter, and granted, the monthly report's a little different, but if you average that two oh one, two oh seven type number that we talk about. Projecting it out, it's about twenty percent, so we've closed the gap quite a bit in waste, but we still have other quadrants and so forth that we have to someday address, but right now, we're giving the rate payer and the system a little bit of a break, but we will look at what we're generating in surplus, can we do some smaller phase, I guess we call it phase three, you know, but that's, we'll have to look at performance in the water budget, see if we can do that. But that's, we'll have to look at performance in the water budget, see if we can do that, rather than going and doing a huge, at least in my opinion, doing another 5 million piece, maybe we can do from our cash flow, certain pieces. But thank you, Charlie. And let's see, Deputy Mayor Kowalczek, you ready to work?
Yep. I'll start with the Village Green Committee's monthly report, current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts as of December 31st. Ours follows, community beautification, we have a balance of $2,666.50. Shade tree contractual, a balance remaining of $2,350 in our checking account. We have $4,450.92 and there are no Village Green Committee's meetings held during the month of December. We'll be gearing up shortly for spring planting, which is in May, so anyone interested in us planting trees on village right-ofways, give us a call, give Cindy a call and she'll relay the message to the committee and we'll be happy to look at your property and give you a tree. Village of Red Hook Highway Department, the snow ordinance is currently in effect until March 31st. And this means that no parking is permitted on village streets from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM and on New York State highways from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. And that's Market Street and Broadway. And when snow and ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any responding law enforcement agencies. And all costs associated with towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. Snow coming this weekend. As another concern, the owner or occupant of every building or lot in the village with an adjoining sidewalk shall remove snow and ice within 24 hours of a snowstorm. At the direction of the Village Board of Trustees, the Highway Department may remove snow and ice left uncleared at a cost of $2 per linear foot. And this cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. Revenue from the sale of scrap metal was received on December 10th for the amount of $336. Total revenue generated this fiscal year is $2,037.50. Since we started this program in 2007, $28,035.67 has been generated. Anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the Village Clerk's Office or the Highway Department at 758-8600 and the Highway Department personnel will pick up scrap metal upon request. The Red Hook Infrastructure and Intermunicipal Task Force monthly report for December. Start with the Red Hook Sewer Project, meetings were held on November 30th and December 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th at the Village Building. CT Mail has followed up on the status and review of the approved process by Dutchess County DOH. On December 3rd, we had subsequent conversations with Department of Health in December, I believe on the 14th. And we'll be following up probably on Friday with that too, see where they stand. The deadline for the property owners who have not submitted easements to challenge the public purpose of the sewer project was December 10th. 129 of the 135 easements have been collected and submitted to Dutchess County Clerk's Office. Property owners who have not submitted signed or notarized easements include Pat Holden and Nabeel Ayoub from the Roasted Garlic or the Red Hook Inn, Michael Lewick of Charlie O's, Vincent Zits of the Sitco Station, and Arvind Bucky Coon. Eminent domain proceedings have begun on the six remaining properties owned by the four property owners previously mentioned. The intent of eminent domain is not to take the entire property or buildings, but only the 10-foot right-ofways and temporary construction easements. Appraisals of the six remaining properties that easements have not been received from, have been initiated and should be prepared, done later than January 11th. I don't know if we received anything. We got some preliminary ones already, but we're coming close to those appraisals. The amounts to obtain, the right-ofways and easements will be forwarded with an initial offering to the property owners who have not submitted their easements. The appraisals are being coordinated by Rottenhausen Shaw and Polidaro LLP, which are land use attorneys. Work is nearing completion on obtaining responses and approvals of finding final documents from the New York State DEC, USDA Rural Development, which is currently no longer working because of the government shutdown, and Dutchess County DOH. Once all regulatory and funding agency documents have been approved, construction bid proceedings can begin. We are seriously looking at a February 2019 date to go out for bid on this project. A conference call was held with USDA, I think it was the Friday before the government shut down on December 21st, with the Acting Director of the USDA Rural Development Division of New York State. And Red Hook is seeking a conditional approval to move forward with the construction building process before all right-ofways and easements have been settled and obtained. USDA Rural Development will grant this conditional approval provided that the village with our engineers submits a letter to USDA that the project can proceed without all easements obtained, noting all outstanding easements, that the project can move forward without outstanding easements and can be built according to scope, and noting that the village is in process of requiring all easements and noting the temporary exclusion of some easements. A meeting was held on November 30th with the Town of Red Hook and Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority and the Village of Red Hook to discuss the formation of a Park County Sewer District in the traditional neighborhood district, which is south Broadway from the village boundary down to Hanaford. And so they're looking at perhaps attaching to our new sewer system as a separate district, meeting all the provisions as listed in our, in our current and adopted sewer use law. The next steps that the town will be undertaking will be the preparation of an engineer report to determine the scope, the boundaries of the proposed sewer district, full potential demand, limited parts to provide a sewer system, baseline costs, and also including the conversion and expansion of the village's treatment plant, trunk lines, and methods of funding. There's also a Phase Two Red Hook Sewer Project that we're currently looking at, an application for the Dutchess County Partnership for Manageable Growth Program was submitted to Dutchess County Executive Mark Molinaro and Owen Rafter, who's the Commissioner of Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, on December 20th. The application was for a water and wastewater facility development grant funding for the Village of Red Hook Sewer and Smart Growth Project Phase Two. The application was prepared by CT Mail and the Village of Red Hook is requesting $500,000 to extend the village sewer system from the Red Hook Commons Wastewater Treatment Plant south along South Broadway to the southern boundary of the village. Phase Two will include 22 properties and will enable the Town of Red Hook and the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to connect to the village sewer service area for the Town of Red Hook's traditional neighborhood district. A follow-up meeting was held on December 28th between Dutchess County Executive Mark Molinaro and Ed Blundell to discuss Dutchess County and Red Hook Village issues, including the proposed sewer project Phase Two. The Red Hook Village Water Project meeting was held on November 30th in the Village Building with our water operator and engineers from CT Mail. We were discussing, as was mentioned in Charlie's report, decommissioning of the Tower Street Elevated Water Storage Tank. VRI and its operator and the Red Hook Village Water Department will submit off-peak water demands to CT Mail. The engineers will then develop a computer program to schedule pump cycles and alter VFDs, the variable flow devices, to not include elevated tanks capacity and pressure. All equipment installed to date was confirmed to be correctly specified and installed, but needs to be reprogrammed. With the new program, there will be a constant pressure booster system. Pumps will run at slower speeds and more regular frequency as opposed to turning pumps on or off as the system currently operates. So we're hoping that will take place soon. On the intermunicipal task force side, both Charlie and I act as Village of Red Hook representatives and members. The task force met on December 7th and 14th at the Town Hall and the task force continues its discussions on possible zoning regulations and zoning amendments regarding non-hosted short-term rentals in residential districts in the Town of Red Hook. Enforcement, frequency of rentals per property, tax revenues permitting, and definitions of transient tenants were discussed. Michelle Gregg and Victoria Polidaro attended the meetings to offer guidance and clarification to the proposed zoning amendments and regulations regarding bed and breakfast establishments, residential and commercial uses, and short-term rentals. Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee and the Community Preservation Fund and the Northern Dutchess Alliance, which I'm members of, did not meet during the month of November. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of December 31st was $1,359,165.72. The Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Working Group, which I'm a member of, met on December 13th and we reviewed the following sections. It would be, one, utilities, which is section two, subsection H concerning water supply, sewer systems. Other utilities, including solar, micro, hydro, and wind, and analysis of these utilities. We also reviewed the section on coastal access points and it was an analysis of coastal access opportunities. The Salt Kill Watershed Community, another committee, held a meeting on December 12th at the Elmendorf Inn. It was a wrap-up of last year's work and the status of projects and programs for the year. We got updates from the Bard College Water Lab and tribute to the water samplers that take samples. And the mission of, just to remind everyone, of the Salt Kill Watershed Community is to protect the Salt Kill Watershed and its ecological, recreational, and historic resources through hands-on science, education, and advocacy. Our aquifer that we do draw water from is part of the watershed. And the Village of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee met on December 16th and we are currently looking at strategies and the scope of work to consider and propose zoning amendments to remove the highway business district from the Red Hook zoning law and zoning map and incorporate its boundaries as part of the general business district. Parts of the R 20,000 along East Market Street may also be considered to be included in the revised and amended general business district. So we're due to have another meeting shortly. And that, that's all I have.
Thank you. So that ZRC task force is Brent, J-Trapp, and Ray Towel. And Ray sits on the planning board itself. As Brent was reading, I found the page has to do with comments he made earlier and Charlie was doing the water report. When one does the math from the daily consumption to, I just want to make, correct something I said. It's actually we're selling 84% of the water pumped, so it's a little better than 80%. And, you know...
Losing 16%.
Yeah, because as I was saying, it sounded a little fat, but, you know, what I do is take the daily average times, 90 days, and compare it to runs I regenerate. It's funny, we push, we sold 14,791,000 gallons of water, so...
That's, that's not a bad number, 16%. Because when, before we did Phase Two of the water, they were saying even with the brand-new water system, expect to lose between 5 to 10%. So we're, 16 is, we're pretty good.
I agree. Because we did hear from engineers, even Hyde Park, when they built a whole new component, they were losing about 11% just in a...
Yeah.
...brand-new system, so. So it's a little better than 80, 20 I said before. Thank you, Brent. Let's see. What we could do is head into regular business. It's 8:25. What I have number one there is procurement policy introduced changes. I did circulate like a red line version of something. Each year at our annual reorg meeting, we talk about the existing procurement policy and you all will recall, maybe about a year ago, we updated, I'll call it the backend of it, we allowed best value and piggybacking options. And maybe I go back, I was looking at our code. So those are more modern versions of how we work and what we do. What that means, if we can find other munis with state contracts or county contracts, like we do with the town, we piggyback off theirs. So when we buy fuel for highway and we use a piggybacking off the town's state contract, the same with salt and sand, then best value is a different version of that. But on the piggybacking side, we, we do look at who else is out there purchasing similar services. What I did notice in the course of things going on here is that our basic code is pretty dated. The state has updated certain numbers where you have to go out to bid and we've asked council to go through and bring us up to date. Essentially what it's done is it's raised the levels where a lot of attention to detail and quotations are needed for purchases. Ours was sitting at numbers between 250 to 29, call $3,000 that we need fax quotations. The ironic part is there's not a fax machine in the building in the modern day. So, and it's not to say we're ignoring it, but it's, modern purchasing is a lot different. We don't have the benefit that the town has as a purchasing manager, so some of those early changes have to do with how we pick up those lower-end items. But we do for certain, review, evaluate price, and really look at the cost of all our purchases. And if you go through the voucher packet, you'll notice that many, many of them are what I would call recurring expenses. It'd be ADP, Central Hudson, Verizon, Time Warner. It's not like we're purchasing brand-new categories of goods in any frequency. And of course, when we go to the bigger ticket items, you know, trucks and mowers and things, those are subject to bid and so forth, and/or state contracts. So we're evaluating what we do buy off state contract now and you'll see, I'm starting to write on the vouchers, what is a state contract or not. And that'll be helpful for everybody, including some challenges we're gonna make in-house on certain things. By the way, that's being circulated. I don't intend to vote on that tonight or anything. I thought everybody could look at it and just get a feel for what's going on and that we'd be on the record that we are moving in that direction. So we'll see, that part's done. I know, next up, I know Cindy's ready or if we can help her here, but on March 19th, there's a village election and three seats are up. And in the village law and in village rules, the village clerk is actually, serves as, I'll call it, our board of elections. We don't use the big county machinery, meaning the county board of elections does not intervene. I think last cycle, we had our highway guys build us an old-fashioned ballot box so we don't have to rent or incur the cost of the big computer-driven scanner reader machines so we can keep it within the budget. We budget each year a few, not a lot of dollars to pay, but to election inspectors. But there is a kind of a protocol Cindy has to go through. Do you have them in front of you, Cindy? Were you want to talk about them or do you need us?
Well, there's three resolutions by law. Number one is declaring there's no registration day.
Maybe if I could jump in on that. What that means is we accept the board of elections registered voters' role. You don't have to separately register for a village election. There's, I think, 1,396 registered voters in the Village of Red Hook.
What's the number?
So what Cindy's saying here with this resolution, she's guided by conference of mayors and New York State law. There's that one. Maybe we'll just review them quickly, then we'll rehash them when we vote on them. But, so what I'm saying there is you don't have to come in here and register to be a voter. You have to have registered with the county board of elections. The next one, Cindy, Resolution Two, tell us what that one is.
That's just stating that the elections are March 19th.
Okay.
From 12 to 8:00.
Good. All right. And that's common practice. We've done that since I've been around.
And number three is appointing Claire MacArthur and Barbara Malinski as election inspectors. And they're both village residents. And they're both village residents.
So they get to sit here from 12 to 9 and...
Mm-hmm, and I will be here.
Make sure you're really a registered voter when you come in, so, um... I know Claire, but is Barbara?
She was, she was at Senior Housing.
Okay.
She's trained.
All right, so are those the only three you need?
That's it.
So essentially, we're saying March 19th is a village election. I guess we should say, I don't know if the law tells, they have to, but there are three seats open, and...
That comes at another resolution, another time.
A different day.
You can say what you want.
Yeah. The seat of the mayor is vacant, the seat of trustee number one and trustee number two to my right are vacant. What that means is we're on four-year terms, but, um, two of us to the side are on, in the second year of their four-year term, and the three of us on this side are on a 3.85 point of our four-year term. So, um, and the good news is, we feel we're a good team, and we're out, we're all out beating the streets. But we won't talk politics here, but we want to keep the momentum and the effort going, so we're, uh, you know, we'll be out there getting our names. There's a formal process where one has to petition and get on the ballot and so forth, and the clerk can help anybody that needs to know about that, but we're out there working. So anyway, resolution number one for 2019 would be, whereas the Village of Red Hook, let's see, I'll start over. Whereas the Village of Red Hook Board of the Village of Red Hook is declaring there will be no registration day for March 19, 2019 Village Board Elections as per Election Law Section 15-108 Subsection 3. And don't take, I'll offer it as a motion that we adopt that, is there a second?
Second.
And just for discussion, don't take it that you can't register to vote, it's just you have to be registered with the BOE in Dutchess County. We have a motion, a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution two, whereas per Election Law Section 15-104 Sub3 SubB of the Board, excuse me, SubB, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook will hold a village election on March 19, 2019, which is a Tuesday, at the Village Hall, 7467 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, between the hours of 12 noon and 9 p.m. I offer that we adopt resolution two, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Resolution number three, 2019, Village of Red Hook Election Inspectors. Whereas the Village of Red Hook Board of Trustees appoints Claire MacArthur and Barbara Malinski as election inspectors for the March 19, 2019 Village Elections as per Election Law Section 15-116 Sub1. I offer three as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you. Sounds like we have an election set and inspector set. Yeah, let's see. Okay, revisions DOT crosswalk resolution. The ongoing saga of the four mid-block crosswalks and DOT, like, the good news is we have finally obtained commitment from them. We've talked about it a lot in different meetings, but, um, they will put the RRFB, that's the Rapid Flashers, at the Morgans Way, Route 9, and the Benner Road, Route 199. Does a certain type of flasher. Then our Library, Fraley, and Route 9, and our Prince Street and Route 9 will be a different version of pedestrian-activated LED, but not the same type beacon. The feeling is, the outer perimeter ones will be a more noticeable beacon, and, uh, and it makes some sense, because people are coming in at a higher rate of speed off different speed limits out there. And the ones internal, they'll be visible and illuminated, but they're not going to be the same. They will be solar-powered. And you might remember, when we passed what we called Resolution 33-2018 at one of our last meetings, that was a template from the DOT. But then, they sent us something where they wanted a red line and change a few things, essentially where we called something a highway, from their nomenclature, they called something that we would construct a highway signalized intersection lighting system. I can assure you, I never made those words up myself. They've changed that to, to construct an enhanced lighting for pedestrian crosswalks. So it's, um, a little bit of a title change, and, um, they threw in, let's see, one thing they changed, they have PIN 80PS.02, and the other one, that looks like, those numbers seem the same. So essentially, uh, one part I disagree with, folks, let's see. Toward the bottom, be it further resolved, let me just see. I think we need to make a Brent-type insertion here. They put, we had in our original resolution, the Board of Trustees of the Village hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into and execute an agreement with the state of New York. They said include the mayor's name. I've never seen somebody ask for the mayor's name, it's the position that's the authorized entity. But sometimes in some of our bigger projects, we have put the mayor and/or deputy mayor in his ab... Something where we, we give another, like a blanket, so if I croak or move away or whatever, you know, it's, somebody else can sign it. But, um, so I, I feel kind of weird having a document that says the person can sign it. It's like, it's the, the position is the authorizing entity. So I was thinking, they'll probably kick it back, but, um, if we said the mayor and/or deputy mayor in his absence is the phrasing I've usually seen. So I would think we could do that there. But, long story short, what this is, it's their suggested wording change. What makes it, the reason is a different number. The first one we passed is 33-2018, this one would be four in the current year, just because it's a new resolution. Little confusing, but, um, you know, what we have to do, I think when we passed the first one, it was in workshop where Trapp was not able to attend that night, according to the, um, to what I'm looking at on the back page, um, they carried that over. But for tonight, resolution four, I see Mr. Trapp on the end of the bench down there. I think that's him, right, Jay? That is you? You are here? I mean, uh, okay, okay. It was, what I was saying is, when we passed the other one, it showed you as not being in the vote, but you are here tonight to vote. So anyway, since he's here, um... I guess I don't really see the need, we're just changing those few things. The Board, do you concur on that? Where, where, what they're promising us is, they're providing the following items, a rectangular, rapid-flashing beacon located, like I said, at 199 Benner, Route 9, Morgans Way, plus pedestrian-activated flashing LED at Route 9, Prince, and Fraley. And they're just, instead of a highway signalized intersection lighting system, it's now called an enhanced lighting for pedestrian crosswalks. And we would delete my personal name and just say mayor and/or deputy mayor in his absence. People good with that?
Yep.
I would offer, therefore, that we void Resolution 33 and replace it with Resolution 4-2019 as stated and discussed here tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we're saying, I'm ready to vote. All in favor? Hopefully they don't make us change it again. But part of that, we got a packet in Cindy's office with, um, I would say, what, five copies of agreements and so forth. What they're asking for now is that they're going to the funding side of it, and, uh, is this... Do you guys have that in front of you? New York State DOT administered project, and they're asking us for a resolution number? What are we up to, number six now?
Yeah, we're doing pretty good for the first month of the year.
Six, I don't know, I think we might be, we might be seven.
Seven.
Before we sign off on this one, uh, I think there's a typo in here, the third, whereas, it says, whereas the Village of Red Hook desires to advance the project by making a commitment of 100% of the costs of construction work for the project or portions thereof. I don't believe that's the case.
Good point, and we'll, we'll talk about that, um, because the first version they sent, we sent it back to them, and Brent can chime in a little bit too, but if you look at the very first paragraph, it says, authorizing the implementation and funding 100% of the costs of an eligible transportation federal aid project and state aid project to fully fund the local share of federal and state aid eligible and ineligible project costs. Now, what DOT has told me is two-level. They are picking up the 80% federal and the 20% other share, so we're, we have no exposure. The line that caught my attention is what you read, and then even further, this, in the first whereas, it says, whereas a project for the Village of Red Hook, and they define it as ADA pedestrian improvements in the Village of Red Hook, and they give it a PIN number, is eligible for funding under Title 23 U.S. Code as amended that calls for the apportionment of the qualified costs to be borne at a ratio of 80 federal funds, 20% non-federal funds. What we're being told, everybody, is that they are picking up 100% of it. What they have to throw in is, we saw this in some of our other federal contracts, if the cost goes over projections, we would have to reimburse them for the increase.
And this is true with, even with the community developed block grants, since that's had money. So this is a provision under federal law? It's, it's kind of like...
I, yeah, I understand. It's just that this is, I mean, the wording in this is horrible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because what we did, I rejected the first one we got, sent it back to Poughkeepsie, and then I went up to Albany, and I was reached, and they sent this one. I can see your concern, I'd be willing, we have a workshop Thursday night. I can say, um, hey, guys...
I don't want to slow anything up, I mean, and if this is the wording that State DOT says...
Because what the guy told me was, he ran it by their legal, and this is the best they could do. Let me run it by our legal.
It just comes across as contradictory.
And the problem I have is, we were told, what, three years ago, we're getting these things, and they're still not here?
Why, I don't want to slow that down.
Yeah, no, no, that's the slow part, it's just like, I don't know what they do in between sending us these things. How about we pull this and make a few phone calls between now and Thursday, and we could put it on the agenda for Thursday? But we can send them the first resolution, because we certainly expect them to pay everything. You know, that's what we're told, and that's, uh, but like Brent said, there is that folded-in wording, we have, they have to have with regard to federal-funded projects. But we'll hold that one, folks. Let's see, website up to...
It should actually be, in all reality, the, the project should come in less, because we were originally asking for four of the rapid strobe lights.
Now it's two and two.
Now there's two, and the, the other two are just lights around the perimeter of the diamond, the yellow diamond sign.
Oh, okay.
So it's a less expensive fixture, still solar-powered, but it's...
Right, so there's no reason, I mean, if anything, like you say, it should come in under budget.
The only reason that I could think of that it may go over budget is the length of time that has lapsed.
Right.
And so we were granted an X amount of dollars originally, which you see is no, no longer specified in any of the documents that we're, we're approving tonight. So that's the key right there, and, you know, to verify that the cost and of installation will be required to do the maintenance on it, and that's something we've already agreed to, so...
Okay.
It's really up to the DOT at this point.
Yeah, I'll get a little more clarification, because that was dancing around a little bit. We'll figure that out. Quick thing on website, like you all might recall, we have a shared service agreement with the Town of Red Hook, where they moved to Civic Plus, and they've got their website up and running in the modern version. We have internally, we're piggybacking, to use that term again, on that, where we have reduced costs, which is nice. And what's happening is, Ari in our office is helping design, she told me today they're in the mood phase. I said, "What's that?" That's where you actually pick the palette of colors and things that appear on our website. I said, "Hey, we just want it done, we don't, the mood isn't that important, it's the data on the page." But it sounds like they're talking about a May completion date. So, um, periodically, we do get people saying, "Hey, your website's a little dated," or something's not there that they're looking for. But right now, it's pretty intentional, we're not trying to spend money on the old one, we're trying to get the new one up and running, so that's the status there. I added something, we need to talk about water operations, but I'd like to move to executive session first and then come back out to talk about that. One note I had to myself, and then we'll open up to Board and public comment on general things. But we did get some communication with regard to sidewalks and clearing. We put routinely the piece Brent reads every month about keeping your sidewalk clear. We do put that in the Village Newsletter too, and a resident thought it was more of a penalty statement, but I'm doing a letter, I'm going to send it out, I have a draft here. But essentially, we built the sidewalks to make, for better community, make, make things walkable, making more access for health reasons to people to get some exercise in loop format, and then also access to the business center from different parts of the village itself. And we do try, we know, since our sidewalks are in the right-of-way near some heavily plowed roads, but we do try whenever we can, however we can, to help lessen the burden. But the law still makes the abutting owner primarily responsible for ice and snow clearing. But like I said, we try to come out and do certain techniques to keep it as doable for people as we can, so they're not having to push a lot of that.
Except on my sidewalk.
Pardon me?
Except on my sidewalk.
Well, but yours is far enough back where you just get the nice clean snow, don't you? Is it, is it light, like, I mean...
Depends.
He does penance every snowstorm, but, um, but anyway, I think the letter was, we circulated the letter off to everybody, and I have prepared, but essentially, we're saying, we believe them to be a positive thing, and we know clearing them is hard, it's just those winter months, but we do try to help out as much as we can without, without gifting anybody, but certain places, we can do what we can, but we're working on that. Anyway, let's go to any general comment. I know, from my perspective, a couple of big things are happening. We're selling water, like we all recall, to the Hoffman Farm, now called Traditions Project off Old Farm Road. They've started construction, they're actually digging holes and getting ready to build a couple models, so it'll be connecting to our water system. What we like about it is going to give us more customers, being built at their cost, and we don't have to read meters or repair infrastructure off any point, any point beyond our main master meter. Dutchess County Waste War Authority is going to be reading the meters and maintaining it on the backside. So we're getting more customers, which helps reduce the per-unit cost to our residents, which is a good thing. And then, um, there is local news that the Baywright family has put their properties in the Village Center on the market, but we've had good conversations with them. They're always great supporters, and if you look at the holiday season, they take excellent care. But the story is, they feel the market's at its height right now, meaning vacancy is low, interest rates are okay, the sewer project coming in makes high demand for that area. And then, within their own organization, their next generations are moving into other businesses. They don't see it staying in the family, so they're looking to move it off on their own. It's, uh, it's making different news in different formats here locally, but overall, it's, it's a big change, but it's not being sold at a fire sale or negative reasons. It's, they do feel the work we've done and where the village is right now, they're at a peak where they can ask the most. And like you might know, Rhinebeck and parts of Kingston are being bought up by their entities. It's a challenge for us, and just where it'll end up, will it sell? Who knows, but they're trying to sell it all as a block.
Really? That I was going to ask, I mean, is it an all-or-nothing proposition?
Well, I've heard different people would like to buy a piece, and right now, they're not entertaining that, so...
That's too bad, because I think the desire, more desirable outcome for the village would be for it to be in multiple ownership.
Yeah, yeah. Right. So it's, um, but that's some local big stories. We still wish we had newspaper where these things would be out there better, but anyway. Any other thoughts, comments, Board? Gentlemen in the audience, anything?
Yeah, I haven't been in the sixth thing up there, now, he's on, he's on his own private well. So what are you calling after him for?
It's not really supposed to be on private wells.
Let me...
There's state laws and local laws.
State law.
State law.
I don't care.
Well, Brent, gents, let me just, I don't know if the customers at Panda World could hear the question, Donnie?
I'm going to force them with this crazy system that you want to put in for sewer.
Crazy? What, let's restate your question first. You said, "Why are we chasing Vinnie Zitz?" Nobody's chasing him, like the Board said, we could, but I want to get your question on the record so people could hear what we're responding to.
I can't have a private well? I got a well, in my house, I always have. And the state says I can't have it? I don't care what the state says. I don't know who the hell they think they are, discussing that.
Well, if you think of the grand concept of things, if everybody had a private well, um, everybody's... um, everybody's, it's eight, well, how many? We have eight hundred, say nine hundred water meters out there, we have nine hundred wells sipping straws from the aquifer, whereas we can do it and control it and make it safe, make it clean, and it costs everybody far, far less. If you had to drill your own well and maintain it, I don't know what you're talking about.
I think there's also, there, there's also safe, safety regulations, so that, certain separations from a septic to your drinking water supply. So that's, that's the regulation right there.
It's an aquifer.
Yeah, but we have public water, which is filtered and treated, so that's why when you have the availability of a public municipal source...
There's gravel, sand, everything else.
It doesn't matter, there's, there's a separation and that's part of the state law, the state health, board of health law, so you can argue with the DOH if you like, who sets and regulates that law, but that's the law that we follow, the law that they follow.
To speak with the state and have them call you if you like.
Or the county, if you like.
Anyway, what else? All right, what I'd like to do is move into executive quickly, I wanna get us out of here too, it's not gonna be long, but, um, I wanna be out of here by nine, so, uh, I know people are traveling today, thank you for coming. And, uh, Jay, maybe you could give us an update before we go. Could we, could you, um, Brent mentioned earlier, speaking of sewer projects, guys, um, we have to work day in and day out with the USDA, folks, and like Brent mentioned, I don't know if you picked up on it, but they're not working right now. So how do you have a government and a world where you can't deal with the people you need to deal with? Jay made it home safely with the TSA people working, Jay, or what happened?
Yes, and I thanked them for working for free today, and he said, we're here to serve and protect.
That's good.
And we appreciate your support.
Yeah, because we're wondering if there are any federal workers in the village. We know of a few, but they missed their first paycheck. Well, you know, I think locals would try to help them if people get pinched, so, uh...
And just for the record, when I got on the plane in Myrtle Beach, there were two TSA workers there, two.
Like, compared to how many normally, would you know?
Geez, there's usually five, six, seven floating around there, but there were two. So they may have gotten ill today and decided not to come to work.
I know, if you didn't make it, we wonder what happened. But anyway, I would like to go to executive quickly, um, so I'd entertain a motion to go in on discussion employment of a particular person or individual. Is there a second?
Second.
We're leaving at eight fifty-seven or eight, we'll be right back. Okay, we're out back to the main room from executive session, looks like it's nine oh six or thereabouts. I would entertain a motion to move from executive back to regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What I wanna do, when Charlie was reporting, we were talking about certain things where, um, looking at staffing and credentialing and getting some meters repaired, operating at a truly high-function level, and, um, we've been working with certain staff members. I think we have to switch where we had VRI doing the oversight, overseeing and professional guidance to some of our staff, I think to comply and make sure everything's working properly. We should, in the interim at least, put VRI for the next rest of the fiscal year to be our actual water operator, and, um, we can revisit it, but we have certain tasks that have to get done, and I think, I know they can do it for us. So that being said, we do pay them six hundred dollars a month now for the functional oversight. They can do it all for sixteen hundred, eighty dollars a month. I would entertain a motion that concludes or asserts the fact they are a technical service. Um, I wouldn't say we're in any emergency situation, but, um, they have a technical expertise that we don't really wanna wait to do an RFQ or an RFP. In the past, we have run RFPs, um, but we got a lot of mom pops, whereas VRI is a real full-fledged professional entity that works up and down the Hudson Valley and is well-respected in the auto, in the water treatment business. That being all said, I would ask that we, uh, move to retain the services of VRI from here January fourteenth through May thirty-one to do full operation and provide us credentialed operators of our water treatment system. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
And this also provides for repairs.
Repairs, yeah, we have about thirty meters that are being mis, are misreading, and they seem to be habitually on that list, where we need their expertise to look at software, hardware, meter condition. We don't wanna fall back to where we were five years ago, where there were a lot of ineffective meters. We don't ever want that to happen again, so they could help us with that too. But, you know, we would still do road repair, you know, excavation, they're not gonna do the heavy lifting, but it'd be more technical and inside expertise. So I moved, I think there was a second, that was discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I think we're good. Anybody else have anything? We have to add our normal two, somewhere we moved the voucher packs up and down. I know I signed, Brent signed, I saw other people signing, uh, so we would move to pay bills after audit. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, Mr. Brent, you ready to go?
I am. I can make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
Sounds good to me, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.